I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Need an approval to, um, a motion to approve the open session minutes from June 5th, 2017?
Motion to approve the agenda of the open session minutes of June 5th.
Second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion to approve the executive session minutes from June 5th, 2017?
Make motion to approve the executive session minutes of June 5th, 2017.
Second.
Oops, sorry, we're gonna have to table that.
Make a motion to table the executive session minutes.
Table the executive session minutes of June 5th, 2017.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that. Community comments? Suprentive comments?
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. I thought I would start, uh, my comments with a follow-up. If you remember, two weeks ago, you approved a tentative field trip just in case students needed to travel out of state as far as a NIPMUC Meekerspace project where they launched a weather balloon into the sky. It was a very, very successful launch, and I just, I put a link in your packet, but we got considerable press coverage through the Milford Daily News, the Worcester Telegram, but also on NBC Boston. So I thought I'd show this quick snippet of what our students actually did.
Under sunny skies, NIPMUC Regional High School prepares for launch. These engineering students coming up with a plan to carry a small box 28,000 feet above central Massachusetts.
I think this is so much better than just textbook stuff.
Inside that box, several ping pong balls loaded with everyday objects. Physics students devising experiments, seeing how things like popcorn kernels react to the atmosphere.
We hope that because of the decrease in pressure and the temperature changes in space, that popcorn kernels will end up popping.
Inside another, a bouncy ball.
We bounced it before it went up, and by the time it comes back down, we're thinking that it's either gonna be deformed, or that the temperatures could affect the insides of the ball, so that it bounces less, or it doesn't bounce at all.
But like many science experiments, this Thursday morning launch didn't go totally as planned.
Right now, it appears that we didn't have enough helium, so we're holding it for now.
The setback, minor for this project, which involved weeks of planning. Students not just focusing on science, but logistics, like crafting this device to make the balloon visible to authorities.
It basically just had to reflect a radar from any angle.
Finally, after the delay, the big moment. The balloon's travels tracked via GPS until it landed later in the day.
The kids felt like they were powered, that the loading was relevant, and that we're trying to make school more like life here.
The next step is for the students to actually retrieve the contents of the weather balloon, figure out if their experiments happened, and then do a series of write-ups and even a documentary to document what actually happened. In Upden, I'm meteorologist Michael Page, NBC Boston.
Thinking about saying... We're happy to say that, yes, it did land about five, six hours later, and it traveled all the way to Ipswich, is where Dave Quinn actually fished it out of somebody's backyard. We, we, you know, we thought, okay, it's gonna land in water, it's gonna land in a tree. Dave had everything imaginable. He had hip waders, he had, you know, ladders, you know, it was crazy canoes attached to his car. But we actually got lucky. So you actually think about that, it traveled probably as a crow flies, about 70 miles. An amazing experience, and I also put in a background note, a link to a follow-up piece that NBC Boston did that actually showed the GoPro video. I realized, it went into the stratosphere, went about 12,000 miles up, and if you look at that footage, it's actually pretty amazing, seeing, you know, the inner cusp of space and the actual curvature of the earth. So, you know, hats off to the Science Department, to Rebecca Eide, to Dave Quinn, and to the students. This is really what we are all about in this district. I know, here at NIPMUC, we've taken a bold stand, and I think this is a preview of really the direction of our next strategic plan, about making learning relevant and hands-on, and, you know, we're gonna have another presentation tonight that's totally targeted along those same exact lines. So, very exciting work.
What gave the heads up to NBC to cover it?
Um, you know, my gut is, I think Dave Quinn sent out just kind of a generalized press release.
And actually, Joe, I'll just jump in, said she's here, Beth Hennessy had a huge role in making the media connection for that.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, pal.
Yep, it's like an active PR campaign, it's fantastic for the school.
It really is. So, very, very proud of that work. So I just wanted to give you a quick follow-up on that. Secondly, I also put in your background, this, in addition to being our last week of school, also marks a bit of a busy time to get some of our summer professional development and curriculum work rolling. I know Maureen Cohen, along with the curriculum assistants, have planned a full slate of PD activities, and she does a lot of half-day workshops during the course of the remainder of this week, before we get into some of the July vacation time. But you can see, I listed there, and there's also a link to our district's curriculum and PD website. A lot of the, the work that we've been immersed in, vis-à-vis our district action plans, particularly focused around technology and the use of some specific apps, educational apps, and classroom management, and also learning management systems like Google Classroom, but also work around project-based learning, design thinking, and also supporting students with anxiety, kind of speaking to a lot of thematic pieces we've done around social-emotional learning. So we're really happy to be able to offer that, and if you go through a lot of the specific offerings, a lot of them are, workshops are being done internally. So it's, our folks working practitioner to practitioner. And then last but not least, you do have in your packet, which will probably be our last year-to-date report for expenditures for our FY '17 budget. Jay, is there any particular line or lines that you'd like to highlight?
Sure, we could talk about a little bit of the building stuff, because we're gonna talk about it a little bit later. If you go to page seven on the, on the printout, if you have it. The big areas that we had concerns about, one of them is very positive maintenance of grounds, maintenance of fields, and snow and ice. The maintenance of grounds and fields is actually a little bit over budget in almost all areas, but the snow and ice, we did really well. So when you put it all together, we've got some, a fair amount of money left over in those accounts, offsetting that. Maintenance of buildings, we had several, several issues during the course of this year that we had to address. Boiler issues, water issues, you name it, we had just about everything you can imagine. So you, in total, we're all about, you know, about 15,000 overdrawn on those accounts. There's a lot more to come that bills have not come in yet. So that's been kind of the offset that we've had. Other than that, everything is finished approximately where we anticipate they're gonna finish. So that's a good sign. The other big one that's considerably over budget, though, that's gonna challenge this year, is the out-of-district tuition, which you'd find on probably the last page. Let me just see it here, yeah, it's on page 10. So we've got several challenges there. Our non-public school out-of-district tuition is about $250,000 over what we budgeted. So that's something that we really have to work on, but it's one of those things that we don't have a lot of control over. That's about it. All in all, though, I mean, putting all of that all together, I think we're actually gonna be in good shape when we finish up the year. We're not gonna finish, you know, anything horrible. I think we're gonna have money left over. We've got some projects we're gonna talk about later in the evening, things that we'd like to address, that we could put in off in the evening address. That's it.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Subcommittee updates.
Diane Duncan typically do the Golden Apple Award for us?
But we have Diane's full comprehensive report, and she's a very thorough woman. But we're very pleased, once again, to honor somebody who's just an outstanding educator, an outstanding person, somebody who's given many years, I believe 22 years, to the Regional School District, and is just exemplary in every facet of her practice. So, we're really pleased to award our second Golden Apple Award, and I'll turn things over to Lee.
Right. So on behalf of Diane Duncan and the Golden Apple Subcommittee, I'm happy to be able to present the Golden Apple Award once again, for the fourth time. We're really pleased that we had a great parental and student representation in nominating individuals in this district. For this award, 40 nominations came in this year. And despite being the end of the year, which is very busy for many of us, people still took the time to recognize some of the good things that are being done by some of the magnificent staff in this district. So we're very excited about that. Tonight specifically, we're taking the opportunity to honor an educator who's put her stamp of excellence on so many students. She received multiple nominations for this award, but it was the way in which her nominators spoke about her, their testimonials, that was really moving to our Subcommittee. Admittedly, the decision wasn't an easy one, because we received many heartfelt awards of praise from more than 35 Mercy staff members, which is a very positive message. So, for tonight's award recipient, first, she has served as a first grade teacher in the district since 1995. Her nominators applauded her ongoing efforts with their students, speaking specifically about the warmth, positivity, and humor that she brings to her job each day, no matter what was happening in her own busy life. She's one of those people whose positive reputation precedes her, no matter where she goes. Before we identify her by name, we have some choice quotes from the nominators that I'll read next. So, one nominator said, "This teacher has completely changed my son's attitude towards school. Once reluctant to go to school, fast forward a year, and now we hear stories of positive things that have happened each day, making him look forward to his time in school. It's a total transformation, and we are so grateful." Another parent responded, "She understands my child and has brought out his funny, silly, and creative side, allowing him to be himself and enjoy school, enjoy learning. She actually makes learning fun by using laughter. She isn't afraid to act silly with the kids. We hear all kinds of stories of how she is the silliest first grade teacher in town." "In this teacher's classroom," another parent says, "kids congratulate each other on successes and cheer each other on. Some evenings, we find our son thinking of ways to try to give one of his classmates kudos. She fosters a community of learning and a community of kindness," another parent said. "She has incredibly high expectations of her students, but uses a lot of love and humor to help them grow academically and emotionally." Another respondent said, "She assisted our family during a difficult time in the fall. I credit her with being a key player in his getting through this, a constant support system for our son, contacting us daily to let us know how he was doing. She went well above and beyond the call of duty, and for this, we are indebted. She is a tremendous role model for all of her students, and we see her impact on a regular basis. He loves school, carries his lessons and objectives with him." So, without, you know, I think many of those statements speak for themselves. This is, this classroom sounds like a fun place to learn, makes me wanna go back to school. So without further ado, it is great pleasure that I award the fourth Golden Apple Award to Kluft School's very own, this is Christine Fiebel, and it's been a general award, and it's been a very important award.
Such nice things. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you, this is a very honor and surprise, so thank you. No speech. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Very, very well deserved.
Those are really nice quotes, and were very sweet.
Very well deserved. I can't say enough positive things about the difference that you make, and this award is all about recognizing educators that go above and beyond and make a difference. You've made a difference, literally, in hundreds, maybe even thousands, of kids' lives, and I appreciate it, and I know Jan appreciates it. And you bring so much to our community, so thank you.
Those are very nice, those are surprising comments, too.
And I just wanna say, as a former colleague of Christine's, I worked with her for 12 years teaching, I know firsthand the incredible, phenomenal teacher she is, and as her administrator, I couldn't be any prouder. She's my unsung hero. She, she doesn't realize how incredible she is and the impact she has on her kids every day. So I am so happy, so honored, that you get to be recognized for what you do every day.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's very fortunate to have such wonderful teachers.
Absolutely.
Supporting and caring for our students every day. The negotiations Subcommittee, we met two weeks ago, approximately two weeks ago?
I wanna say that sounds about right, yeah, we could go Thursday?
Yep, I think so. We continue to work on coming to a resolution for the contract negotiations, and once that has been finalized, we'll be making that public.
Sure, and we'll have an update in executive session.
Excellent. Old business?
Uh, there is no old business.
Excellent. And moving on to new business?
So, I alluded to something that we had very recently, back on Tuesday, June 6th, so almost, a little, about a couple weeks ago, where we held our first-ever Financial Wellness Fair for all of the sophomores and juniors. And we have some students on hand. We have Beth Hennessy, who is our Career and Community Coordinator, and Ryan Cody, who is a business education teacher. And they're gonna walk us through this experience, which I think was a really valuable learning experience for our kids. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for having us here tonight. And here are my colleague Ryan and his students from his personal finance class, and we'll talk to you a little bit about what happened. But just to bring you up to speed on how it came to be, we received a $5,000 grant from the State Treasurer's Office, from the State for the Financial Innovation Program. And we're really fortunate to be able to do that. And many schools that have offered this in the past call our, call their fairs a reality checker, a reality fair. And we had a steering committee that involved the students, and they felt that our, our goal here is wellness all around, and so our fair should be called the Financial Wellness Fair. And so that's how we came to have our Financial Wellness Fair. And I approached Ryan about working with his personal finance students to get some authentic experience. So, again, to bring the classroom experiences to a real-life context. So, in this case, it was the financial lessons, but also being a member of a steering committee. So, we, as part of the grant, we reached out to the community to get, to be able to receive the grant, we had to have some financial institutions onboard. We had to show that we had faculty buy-in, and that we had a structure that we were gonna offer that. So, Ryan, I don't know if you wanna talk a little bit about your, your students and how I relate to their class?
We knew, yeah, we knew it would be a lot of work. I think it was eye-opening for you guys as a junior and a freshman to try and figure out how much planning really went into a fair like this. It was an incredible, incredible amount of work. I think you guys are better forward and realize, you know, planning is of the utmost importance, so.
So, Ryan, do you wanna tell us a little bit about what it meant to be on the steering committee? Ah, Ryan.
Nate.
Nate, sorry, I'm looking at Nate, say it, Ryan.
I thought it was a really good experience for, from a different point of view, instead of being a student, usually going through the usual, going through, like, different activities, but it was different being able to set up and actually participate, actually be able to control some stuff.
So as a member of the committee, they met twice with two bank, bank vice presidents that sat on the committee, some faculty, and, and then myself. And as part of the committee experience, they had to give their opinion, they had to take responsibility for a portion of the, the whole function, and they had to then, when they came back to the committee, to report out on their progress on their things, just as you would. And they received minutes, as the whole committee did, and, and updates, and had action items that were assigned to them. So, I don't know, maybe Reem, you can tell us a little bit about what's, what's happening in the packet that we've given to you, and how it came to be?
So, each student had to prepare some basic things. So in their math classes, they completed a W-4 form, and they also had to fill out an employment eligibility certification packet. They also had to take a survey online to determine which career they wanted, so we could give them a starting salary for their fair.
So each, we actually had a record, I think, turnout for the respondents for the careers. So they were given the 16 career clusters, and they were asked to pick a career cluster that they thought that they might be interested in post-high school, and also what level of educational attainment they thought they might have. And then we used a spreadsheet to match all the students with a desired career. So in front of you, Tony Richardson, who's a member of our committee but isn't here just yet, gave us permission to use his. But you can see, if you look where Nate's gonna be on the right-hand side of the, your packet, you wanna tell a little bit about what's there?
Yeah, so, one of the pages that's gonna be on the right-hand side is the instructions for the students. It basically shows the goals and the tasks on how you should go through the financial fair. And then, another piece is the employee information. So, it gives a student a occupation based on their W-4 form and I-9 form, and it also gives them a gross annual salary for, and this was Tony's, he was an event planner and made $50,000. And then, also, another page that's on the very back is a graph that allows you to calculate with all the numbers that you've been through on the financial fair.
So it's on the backside of your financial packet. So each student received an individualized packet with the career that they'd selected, and all their financials, a pay stub, with all their deductions and whatnot. And then thanks to the 50 or so volunteers from the community, including parents, including Ms. Kelly here, and also lots of help from everyone from Sundine Furniture to represent the housing booth, Hal Linsky from the Ed Foundation, also many, many folks from Charles River, Dean Bank, Milford National, and also Unibank, where they represented insurance companies. So there are about 20 different booths, which are represented by the, the backside of that spending plan. And the students had to visit all the booths and come up with a monthly budget based on their assigned career and their monthly net income. So in your packet, we did send you some of the comments from the students. There was, it was a very eye-opening experience for the students, a lot of comments about their surprise, about how their parents afford their vacations annually, given how tight it is to budget, and also a lot of things about, that they plan on doing differently as a result. This is a sustainable event. We did receive the $5,000 grant initially, but we can apply by July 17 for a sustainable grant, but we'll just plan to have that run there again next year. We spent a lot of our money this year on student design signage, including an A and R student designed our logo, which you can see on your home painted calculator that's inside, this is the logo that we had designed. And also, a lot of purchases that we can use as a district as well, for example, 30 easels and tablecloths and things like that. So, all in all, it was a great experience. Feedback from the students, 74% of the students rated it 30 excellent as an event. The three favorite topics included buying goods and services, saving, and earning income. But many students did note that learning about student loans and community service, and then the students were able to eat a lot, unfortunately, on the salary for donation, or choose to donate a certain amount of time hopefully to community service. And 73% of them said that they were likely to, extremely likely to use the information.
Fantastic, good idea.
So they were also, you have samples in there of, of the things that students see when they go through our information, and students, I don't know how to type up this for this.
Each student sees a, well, say this one, a phone wallet that you put on the back of your phone. It sticks to the back, and you can hold, like, a couple credit cards, and it has the NIPMUC Regional High School logo across the back.
The students really enjoyed it.
So every student who filled out their career survey was rewarded with a phone wallet. And then each student, the banks and other community members, everything from dentists to, you know, banks, to a lot of, a lot of different folks in the community did donate things, like, for when you attend any conference, you should get some swag, right? And so they did have lots of things to represent. They were picking dental insurance, so they had toothpaste, nutrition and safety, so they had sunscreen, and they had, oh, lots of things, and they all walked away with a bag as well. And included in that is some really great financial information, taking charge of your credit. This is an online thing. All of our students, when they're sophomores through 21st century, do complete the Ever5 Financial Literacy Program, so this was a nice building block in that.
This was a phenomenal fair for the kids. You guys enjoyed it?
Yeah.
And you learned a lot from putting, because you guys put it together with some other volunteers and best friends.
Yeah, hoping to do it next year.
The folks in the community overwhelmingly asked when they could come back again, and couldn't comment enough about how polite and engaging our students were, so we should be proud.
I'm sorry, you may have said, how many students were involved?
Uh, all of the sophomore and junior class, so just over 300 students. So we brought the sophomores in first, they got a little orientation in tone setting in the auditorium for about 10 or 15 minutes, then they made their way to the HR desk in the gymnasium, where they, the students distributed their HR packets with all this information in it, and then they made their way around the building.
How many, how many got the wallets, how many filled out the?
228 students. And all the faculty received a wallet, as well as our volunteers. And now you.
Hats off to all of you guys.
They did a great job.
A couple things. First, the connections with the community, with our parents, with the local businesses, that is super powerful. And secondly, just the, the nature of the programming. I, you know, I've been an educator now, with 28 years. If I could have a quarter for every time somebody has said to me, "You know, kids today, they don't know how to balance checkbooks, they don't know how to fill out a credit app, they don't know what their credit rating's all about." Okay, there might be some truth to that, but the fact that you are teaching those, these lifelong pragmatic skills, is remarkably powerful.
And hats off to the faculty as well, because each time we've had one of our conferences, they've offered financial literacy programming. When we did our March conference, the number one requested topic on what do all students need to know is how to do my taxes.
Yeah.
They don't like taxes. Not a fan.
So thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So the next item is the MURSD Summer Maintenance Projects.
Okay, so you should have in your packet a short, one-page handout that Jay is prepared to speak to regarding some summer projects which the district is planning on commencing. So if you could speak to... So if you could speak to those, Jay?
Sure. So, yeah, it's just a very short list. There are some things that need to get done, facilities that we have put off for a long time. And typically, at the end of every year, we have money left over. This is how we kind of take care of some of these capital needs, by addressing them. Short and sweet. So I'll go through the list very quickly. When it says Nittmuck Server Room Air Conditioner, this is one that we didn't really have a big option. The server in this building is in an air-conditioned room, otherwise the servers overheat. These particular servers control the Internet and phone systems in three of our four buildings. So it's important that we keep the stuff running. That closet you see there is probably going to be a little bit more than that because as we got into it, we found out we had to move the entire server to another location because they have to actually bring something in to hoist the new unit in right above where the current rack is. So there's going to be a little bit of cost in relocating and bringing it back. So that's the first thing, and that project has already started. I believe they're actually coming Wednesday to start the work. We had to open up a wall to run new piping. It's a fairly extensive job. I believe the server room, this particular server room is down in the basement or in the first floor.
It's the first floor and the basement, is what we call it.
First floor. First floor, the first floor. The bleachers in the gymnasium here at Nittmuck, they are automatic, they are motorized, they open and close. They open and close quite a bit. There's a lot of wear and tear on them. We need to keep them up to code, we need to keep them functioning, we need to keep them working. And that's the quote from that, it's from a company called Hussey, which is one of the few companies that does that kind of work. I believe they're coming to do that sometime in mid-July because they're so busy. You see a lawnmower on there. As you know, we have a lot of fields at this building here, and the mower that we had was almost twenty years old and was going to cost about five thousand dollars to fix. It seems like it's not worth spending five thousand on a twenty-year-old mower. So that's been replaced. The next item, the District Maintenance Pickup Truck. That's a smaller pickup truck. If you remember, we purchased a large truck about two years ago, a big F-250 that we used to haul some of the heavy equipment around, the landscape trail or the tractors we have. You'll see me driving it on Memorial Day with all the paraded drum equipment. That's sort of a utility vehicle. This is a smaller pickup for a lot of the day-to-day stuff. Truck that we currently have is a two-thousand-six Dodge Dakota with about a hundred-and-forty thousand miles on it. It won't pass inspection anymore, so we need to replace that. Now, when we buy a truck like this, we buy off the state contract through a dealer in Marlboro, so it's a fairly good price. This is for an F-250, four-wheel drive, so that's something we'd like to address. Exterior doors at Misco Hill. This covers the doors that go around from the back of the building, by the football field, around by the superintendent's office, and up to the daycare center. If you ever notice, as an example, the door that goes in the superintendent's office, it takes two people and a really hard tug to get it to actually open, and then it doesn't close. Those doors, the casings are all rusted out. Again, they're from nineteen sixty when the building was built, so we need to get those replaced. We're not sure yet. That was the quote, to do them all, but then I was told that there was even more work involved. And I basically instructed Ken, who's kind of coordinates this, that that's how much money he's got. So if it means we have to drop a door or two off because something else is more than we thought, that's what we're going to do. The canopy's in the front, so not the carports, but you know, the entranceway, you've got those little covers that come out. The wood is rotting away on those things, and rather than replace the wood and try and paint it and keep it up, we're going to site it with some, like an aluminum-type siding. We had three quotes on that. The highest was twenty-eight thousand, this was the lowest. So that's something we'd like to address. The band room at Misco Hill has been using folding chairs. I don't see any in here, but it's really difficult for them to perform on those. We got a really good price on getting new chairs for there. And then the last thing you see there is a three-way valve on the boiler at Clough. So we have used considerably more gas. If you go back to the year-to-date reports, you'll see that our gas account was over by about fifteen thousand dollars. We're using more gas there than anywhere else, and we think it's because a valve is stuck open, and we need to replace it. So we don't have a price on that yet, but we're expecting it to come in around seven or eight thousand. We had a similar issue here at Nittmuck two years ago. We reduced our gas usage by probably thirty percent by replacing that valve. So it's definitely, it's going to pay for itself within a year, but it's something we need to make a capital investment in. We'll also make the heat work better, and I think Mrs. Gallagher will tell you, we've had some challenges with the heat over there on various days. Sometimes it's too hot, sometimes it's too cold. It's like Goldilocks and the Three Bears. It's never quite right, though. All this stuff totals up to about a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. I've given you two sources of funding. The savings on snow and sand alone, which is a hundred-and-six thousand dollars. And the health insurance deductible, as you know, we pay the deductible portion of health insurance. We budget seventy-five percent of our total liability. We typically come in around sixty-five percent, but there needs to be some leeway there in case we have a high-hit year. But it looks like we're going to have about twenty-six thousand dollars left. So it comes out about ten thousand dollars more than we actually have for costs, but we haven't priced out that three-way valve yet, and there's probably a couple of other variables. So those are the projects we're going to undertake this summer, assuming that you guys are okay with all of them. Like I said, a couple of them, unfortunately, I would love to tell you that you could say no to, but you can't because we need the server, we need the phones. I think we need the Internet, right? We need the Internet, right? Since it was invented, it's an important thing. So that's the projects we're working on this summer. Of the list of capital projects, as you know, it's about six million dollars worth when you add it all up, things like carpeting in rooms. And as Joe likes to say all the time, we're one flush away from having a problem at Misco Hill with the leach field. We're going to have to start to address these things one by one, but those are the big things. These are the little things that we think we can take off a year at a time, depending on how we finish up. Is there any questions?
I have no doubt you have complete control of the numbers. Do these numbers match up between?
Yes.
The snow and sand?
Yes.
All right.
I trust you.
When you look on that one, you see that they're combined with the fields and ground. So we went over on the field ground, which is why it's about eighty-eight thousand. But the snow and sand alone, that was the same. We had a great year. You know, we budget, we try to budget for snow and sand. And you know, sometimes we've gone over, sometimes we go over. We've had two really good years where it really didn't snow much at all. And I'm always telling Ken, you know, two inches is, don't bother, you don't need to, it'll melt. He doesn't listen, but. I'm confident that we can tackle all these projects and still be in good financial shape at the end of this fiscal year.
Sounds great.
Any correspondence?
We have no correspondence.
That doesn't mean a vote?
It typically has not.
Okay.
Just making us aware, right?
Other matters not anticipated by the committee within twenty-eight hours of the posted meeting?
I just wanted to mention something. I was attending the, what was it, the International Fair for seventh grade? I thought that was a very successful event. The kids were very excited about it. It's outside on the track. Got the ability to show off some dancing and some food, and it was really kind of a joyous affair. I didn't expect it to be so elaborate, but it was, the kids really took to it with gusto.
And it was a new event, too.
Yeah, it was a brand-new event. So I, I just thought I'd mention that because it was, actually, I thought it was pretty successful.
Yeah.
And so my kids especially put a lot of work into that. So it was worth a little bit of it, I guess, but it was well done.
Future agenda items? The one-to-one learning evaluation presentation on August twenty-first will be coming up? Um, we need to make a motion to a roll call. Do we end the session?
Okay. I'll do it.
So we just want to use the motion.
All right, so we need to make a motion. I make a motion that we adjourn, be a roll call to executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, subsection A, exception number three, to discuss strategy with respect to successor agreement to the teachers' collective bargaining agreement because doing so in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session.
Second?
Roll call?
Joyce Scully, aye.
Tana Janko, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Phil Zetter, aye.
Sean Nicholson, aye.
The meeting is adjourned at seven forty-two.